I'll order the April meeting of the Johnson City Board of Education and thank everyone for being here tonight. We always start our meeting with a moment of silence. If you join me in a moment of silence, please. Thank you. I will turn the meeting over to our friends from Indian Trail. I believe we have two that will be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance and then Dr. Jacobs.
Check one.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job, girls. Thank you so much. Also, I'd like to direct your attention to the artwork in the back. Mrs. Patakalis was kind enough to display your students' artwork. They did a great job. Board and Dr. Barnett, thank you so much for the opportunity to work for Johnson City Schools. Just like I say every year, this is the greatest district I've ever worked for. It's the greatest job I've ever had. So, thank you. Thank you so much. Right now at Indian Trail, we have a lot going on. I know you guys know that, but we are currently focusing on the staff and the students that we have. Like, that is a big deal. We want to be planning and moving forward, but we got to take care of the kids in the building. And so, that is our, that's our focus. And we got to give these guys the best experience possible. Celebrations for us this year. I feel like we've accomplished a lot. We have more extracurricular activities this year, more contracts, extended learning contracts than we ever have in the past. Just to highlight a few. We have Girls Who Code, Tabletop Game Club, Chess Club, Mathletes, Vex Robotics, and their name is The Iron Hawks. Girls on the Run. We've got a Newspaper Club. They do a great job turning out our school newspaper. STEM Club that the kids love, and of course, their student ambassadors. We had two student ambassadors up here that did a great job with the pledge. I want to highlight two programs that have been outstanding. First of all, our Homework Club. Robbie, were you involved in the Homework Club? That's been amazing for our school. Thank you so much for that. Big shout out to Robbie. It's for students that need that extra push, that, you know, they struggle in class and they need something more. We have Mr. O, Kevin Utten, who's been leading this force. And we've, we've got five teachers that staff Homework Club every day till 5 o'clock. Five teachers every day. That's amazing. We average about 40 students every day that come to Homework. They work on homework. We have the Hands-on Museum that comes once a week. We have yoga for those kids once a week. And then Music Makers. They come once every quarter to work with their students. It's been super successful. So, thank you so much, Robbie. It's been great. Another program I think we've done a great job with that's new for us, Tony Dungy's All Pro Dads. This is something new that we started this year and actually came from your teachers, Miss Glenna Carruthers, saw it and thought it would be great for your school. Basically, an overview, we're averaging about 30 dads a month. We meet every first Friday of the month at 7:00 a.m. We do a light breakfast and we provide a focus and specific topics for dads to engage with their kids every Friday or every Monday or every, every month that we meet. And then the dads, you know, they continue that practice at home. So, we really want to engage fathers at the school. And it's been great. As a matter of fact, we've been so successful. Tony Dungy shot a video for us.
Hi, I'm Tony Dungy and I want to say congratulations to the Johnson City School District in Tennessee for expanding the All Pro Dad chapters program into your schools. When we started this program over 20 years ago, we had no idea how great an impact it would have all across the country. With the simple conviction that dads everywhere need to focus on their families, we created opportunities for dads and their kids to create some great memories on the football fields as well as in local schools. Now, I continually hear stories from dads about how this program strengthened their relationship with their kids. More often than not, when I'm traveling, I get approached in airports, hotels. It's a dad sharing his thanks for this program. We're truly excited for you as you continue to reach out to your community and connect dads to your schools. Thank you so much for being a part of All Pro Dad.
That's a big shout out from legendary coach Tony Dungy. So, we appreciate her teachers' work at Indian Trail. Looking ahead briefly to the future, we're taking care of business today, but we're also looking ahead, moving to the transition. And I want to work toward building a brand-new school. We don't want to be thinking of Indian Trail as, okay, well, let's invite some Liberty Bell teachers over and let's have school. We want to start from scratch. So, that takes a lot of thought, a lot of work, and really some foundational things like building relationships. Before I get to that, I want to give a few shout outs to Todd Barnett. Man, he's been everywhere on this thing as far as creating the program of studies, making sure that we maintain equity between Indian Trail and Liberty Bell, Academics, Athletics, and Extracurricular Activities, Keith Turner. We did an athletic or a coaching survey for the district a while back. We got that interest information back. And then Keith and I went to every school in the district recruiting coaches to see what their abilities were, to see who was interested in, and how can we pull them into Indian Trail to coach for us. Gosh, Almighty, Dr. Barnett, for his vision for two middle schools has been, it's been solid and it's really guiding us along as we work. We also have, I think, speaking of athletics, we have cheer and dance tryouts coming up next month. I mean, it's here. It's really happening. It's been a lot of work, but, you know, it's coming to fruition. Big shout out also for the March 1st District-wide In-Service Day. So, teachers, I don't think we had kids in the building. We didn't have kids in the building. Teachers got a chance to work. That gave us an opportunity to work with the teachers that we want to inherit. Your fifth grade principals, our teachers from Indian Trail came to you guys to their new home school. They got to meet you as a principal, see you as a leader, and meet your faculty. You guys did a great job. I heard so many positive stories. And our teachers felt so good about going to your school after spending a day with you. So, thank you, guys. You did an amazing job. For us, we got our Liberty Bell teachers with Indian Trail teachers, and we got a first look at our faculty. And I really wanted us to think about relationships, culture, and climate, because that's important when you start the hard work building a school. So, I put the great minds of Kelly Lane, Brittany Sarowski, and Becky Edmiston together. And we came up with three sections for a day. We're going to do a meet and greet where everybody was assigned a group name and tasks. I had to go around and meet every person on the new faculty. We did a scavenger hunt that took place throughout the building. And then a Teacher Olympics. Everybody's competing for the gold. I've got a little video that I want to show you about what that looks like for today.
You would love it a plan that could mean some big changes for some Johnson City students. Here's a big move.
As great Johnson City schools are taking the next step to prepare to switch to two middle schools.
Local schools are getting ready for a big change this fall.
Johnson City schools have now selected which teachers will go where, ahead of a switch to two middle schools this fall. Right now, students go to elementary school through fourth grade, then Indian Trail intermediate school for fifth and sixth, Liberty Bell Middle School for seventh and eighth, then Science Hill High. The new plan switches both Indian Trail and Liberty Bell to grade six through eight.
Indian Trail doesn't have seventh grade teachers or eighth grade teachers, so we need those. Our fifth grade teachers will go back to elementary school. So, they did a lot of work on placing teachers at both schools that will be successful.
So many smiles. Yes, thank you. So many smiles, so much laughter. It was great to see these guys come together because building those relationships is important. Culture eats structure for breakfast. I heard Anthony Muhammad say that, and it is true. The culture of your school is important. We have now started working on school-wide discipline crosswalk, their master schedule, and the student handbook with combined committees from both schools, and they're working hard every day after school. But we had to start with relationships because they're important. That's it. Do you have any questions?
One clarification, because now I know how rumors get started. When you say we're going to build a whole new school, you are not talking about the building.
I'm not asking for budget amendment or...
Just wanted to clear that up.
Metaphorically speaking.
Thank you, Dr. Jacobs.
Thank you.
Any question?
You peeled the sign. Maintenance came out, peeled the veneer off because Indian Trail wasn't a middle school. So, this last nine weeks, it says Indian Trail Middle School has the Hawks on it. It's got the old sign, and they cleaned it up. Maintenance Department did a great job.
They did a great job. It looks awesome. Indian Trail Middle School's back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is recognitions.
So, we got several recognitions for the April Board meeting. We want to first recognize two students from Liberty Bell Middle School. Ryan Galati, an eighth grader who placed third in the Elementary-Middle School Division of the History B for the East Tennessee Region. As a result of his finish, Ryan now qualifies for the National History B in Orlando, Florida. Is Ryan here? Come on up. Aiden Nuru is an eighth grader who placed second in the Elementary-Middle School Division of the Geography B for East Tennessee Region. As a result of his finish, Aiden now qualifies for the National Geography B in Orlando, Florida. Aiden, are you here? We want to recognize Julia Gilmore for a couple of recently earned awards. Julia was recently named the recipient of the Appalachian Highlands 20 Under 20 Award. This award recognizes outstanding accomplishment in areas of community service, leadership, academics, entrepreneurship, and STEM activities. Julia was also recently recognized by Governor Bill Lee with the Volunteer Star Award for Washington County. In addition to her work that you've, that we've talked about here before with St. Jude's, Julia is also now leading efforts to help the citizens of Ukraine during this time. If you could come up, please. We want to recognize four students from Science Hill High School who recently were named finalists in the National Merit Scholarship Competition. These four students represent the top 1% of all students who participated in this competition. The students are Sophia Cross. Is Sophia here? Sophia also earned a perfect ACT score achieved by less than one-half of 1% of all test takers. Another National Merit finalist is Yalea Lee. Yalea? Leon Sarkody. And Kyler Sood, if you want to come up and get his award.
I always love the recognitions. That's my favorite part of the meeting. Next on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda, and I'd like to suggest one change. I would like to move our tenured teacher up to the very beginning so that we can vote and recognize him at the beginning of the meeting. Yeah, is there, are there any other changes or additions? Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as?
I'm listening to the adopted status.
There we go, as, as modified.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? All right. So, that comes as a recommendation from the superintendent.
I'd like to make a recommendation. And it's interesting, Mr. Moore was left off the list. He'd been in the system for a long time, left, and actually went into ministry, left the country, came back. So, we noticed he actually was eligible for tenure again this year. So, I'd like to recommend Mr. Chad Moore for tenure in Johnson City Schools.
Okay, and tenure votes are always a roll call vote? Are there any questions? Ms. Bird, will you call the roll?
Ms. Beth Smithson?
Yes.
Ms. Michelle Tree?
Yes.
Ms. Ginger Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Herb Greenly?
Yes.
Mr. Tom Hager?
Yes.
Ms. Kathy Hall?
Yes. All right, thank you. And now, we will recognize. We decided not to recognize before we voted.
So, we want to recognize Chad Moore from Town Acres Elementary. He's made a significant positive impact on the students at Town Acres and has contributed greatly to their success. So, we want to thank him and recognize him for his commitment to our students.
All right, that brings us to Correspondence, Delegations, and Communications. We had no one sign up to talk this evening, so we'll go to reports from the superintendent and staff.
Thank you. The first report is the Building Projects Update. Mr. Triv is not able to be here, but Mr. Barnes is here in case you have any questions about the information in your packet for the Building Projects Update.
Any questions for Mr. Barnes? Okay.
I have one, but it wouldn't be for Mr. Barnes. My understanding...
Could you use your microphone?
My understanding, the city was going to correct the erosion bank, I'll call it, on the west side of Freedom Hall. I stand corrected. I don't think that has happened. It just keeps getting worse. I would be interested to know if and when they're ever going to do that. It, that building, well, as everyone knows, ETSU uses that building. And in a few weeks, that building will be used for early voting. It's quite possible, quite possible. Some people might have to walk through mud to get into the building where the voting will take place. And my opinion is that needs to be taken care of as soon as possible.
I think there are two sections. There's one at Freedom Hall and then one on the side at Liberty Bell as well. Is that correct, Mr. Hager?
Correct.
So, Joe, Mr. Hager said he would meet you over there, too, if you need. Are you familiar with the two spaces that he's talking about? Okay. Okay, good. Can you get us an update for that? Thank you. All right. Thank you. Next report is to Middle School Transition Update, Mr. Todd Barnett.
So, I gave a report about the same time last year. And I had this similar slide up, and the projected start date was 485 days. And now, we're down to 121. So, this is getting to be a very real event, as you saw from what Dr. Jacobs has already done. Dr. Jacobs, Dr. For, both of them have led efforts with professional development already, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. But just, just want to update you on probably a little bit of a review of how we got to this point and what we're doing from this point forward. So, just in terms of a little bit of review, the why, we wanted to reduce the number of transitions, as we talked about last year, from four to three. We wanted to send fifth grade back to their elementary schools to open up some room at Indian Trail. And we wanted to expand opportunities for our students. And one thing I want to say about that, you know, we talk about the academics, athletics, fine arts, leadership development. I'll give you an example of that. This past Saturday, if any of you were around, our orchestra kids performed in Freedom Hall. We had about 2,000 kids there, or 2,000 people there to see that. So, you can tell there is we want to make these opportunities available, but there is, there is interest in expanding opportunities for our kids. And I think there was good evidence of that this past Saturday. And as a little bit of a reminder, we'll have Rejoice in the Arts in the Mall this coming Tuesday, the 12th. All of our elementary schools and both of our middle schools will be, will have kids performing in the mall at that time from 5:00 to 8:00. So, and then we wanted to allow some additional time for our kids, moving two years at a time through some very formative years. We wanted to revisit that and slow it down a little bit and give these kids time to develop and mature from sixth grade through eighth grade and have some opportunities for leadership that they'll see again at the high school level. So, this transition helps us do that. Just a little bit, the numbers have changed just slightly since we talked about this last year. I think these are more accurate now based on our current enrollments. If you look at Indian Trail Middle School, we're projected to have about 854 next year at Indian Trail, and it'll be made up of those three elementary schools, Fairmont, Lake Ridge, and Mountain View. And then, if you notice, Liberty Bell Middle School, the projected enrollment is just slightly over 900. Now, that could change just a little bit one way or the other, but to five schools that will serve Liberty Bell Middle School, Cherokee, Northside, Southside, Town Acres, and Woodland. So, that's what, when the school year starts, that's kind of what we think it's going to look like. Middle School characteristics, we want to ask, and we talked about this last year, we want our kids to have an equitable experience. And our principals at both of those buildings, they understand that, and they're working hard toward trying to make sure that that occurs at both schools. We want them to have common opportunities in academics, athletics, the arts, and their extracurricular program. We want them to have a common program of study, and I think you have our program of studies in your packet. And the big thing, I think, in thinking about this is we want to make sure that once they go to Science Hill, they are prepared. They're prepared to be students at Science Hill, and then Science Hill will prepare them for the, for the next chapter of their life. The staffing, we just finished in January, the staff, for the most part, that are going to be placed at their new schools, were notified back in January. Dr. Jacobs just showed you a few minutes ago some of the in-service activities that occurred on March 1st. We have another full-day in-service opportunity on May 3rd, and then our principals will set the calendar going into the 22, 23 school year. Student placement, and I know that's going to get a lot of questions. Students will be placed at the middle schools by their elementary cohort. You know, part of this alignment was to make sure that, we wanted to try to keep kids together in the cohorts with their friends and as much as we can. For students that didn't attend a JC Schools Elementary, their home address is what's going to be used to identify their placement. And we're going to send out a mailer on the 29th of this month that'll have their placement. And we're going to send out a mailer on the 29th of this month that'll have their placement, their principal's welcome letter, brochure, and some bus information as well, and we'll send all that out the 29th of April, they should get it within a couple, three days, and, and they'll have the biggest part of the information that they need to begin the 22, 23 school year. Transportation, I've been talking with Eldana and Transit about this, as I said, we'll sell, we'll send out those forms on the 29th, and we're going to ask that they, they are returned by the 16th. Now, to kind of help guide this process along, I've talked with both the principals, and we're looking at trying to have a spring meet and greet and orientation somewhere around May 11th. And if we can do that, part of that will be an opportunity for students and families to turn those forms in, pick them up, fill them out, get them turned in, and we can get them to Transit right then. John C. Transit will start, once they, this is kind of new for, for them as well, she'll have to get all the information and then start building the routes, so she will start notifying, or Transit will start notifying families of their bus information, their AM bus, PM bus, all that stuff, beginning mid-June. It won't all happen mid-June, but that's when they'll start, hopefully by the first July, the biggest part of it. One thing in discussions with Eldana that we've talked about is, just like any other school year, it's going to take a few days, a couple of weeks, to get the transportation worked out. So, you know, we'll just need to work, and I'm sure she'll work diligently at that, but once the school year starts, there may be some slight adjustments and changes to routes, but for the most part, she'll have it set by the time the school starts. Program of Studies, you should have your program of studies as it is right now with your packet. And basically what that is at this point is an overview of all our offerings, you'll see in the common content areas that they're going to be the same at both schools. Some of the related arts may be just slightly different, not very many, and maybe two, three courses or so, but just based on what they're doing currently and as part of the transition, we'll take a look at that. And we're going to make all this available on the website, probably, in talking with Colin, we would like to have it up on the website by Friday, the 8th, so we hope to have that available. And, and we'll be good with that. Extracurriculars and clubs, because I know that's important, Dr. Jacobs talks about culture, and I've heard Dr. Flor talk about the same thing. One thing to keep in mind with clubs is they, and from my experience at the high school level and some at the middle school level, sometimes some clubs are pretty fluid, they're driven by student interest, both schools may not have the same clubs, if there's interest at both schools, we obviously want to try to have them, but there may be a club that has a little bit of interest at one school and no interest at the other, so that'll be fluid and change sometimes year to year. But just to give you an example, and Dr. Jacobs talked about it a little bit, we have 4H Club, Art Club, we have mathletes at both schools, we'll have student ambassadors, one thing we'll have at the middle school level is the Student Government Association, and we'll have our, some clubs in the arts as well. One of the things that's been really successful at Indian Trail and is going to be really successful at Liberty Bell is Intermials, it's, the Intermials at Liberty Bell is doing really well right now. And talking with Coach Turner, we offer lacrosse at, if the interest is there, we'll take a look at that, at offering it at the middle school level as a club. Mountain biking, I think, is really strong right now, and in talking with Coach Turner, we're looking at trying to add tennis, maybe in the fall, it would be a fall club sport if the interest is there, so we're going to explore that as well. And then you notice our team offerings, transition to two middle schools, you'll see that we have basically a full palette of sports for fall, winter, and spring. You'll notice, if you notice swimming and wrestling, you see those are co-op sports, and we'll bring both schools together for those, for those two. The rest, the rest of them, they'll be individual based on their school, so we look forward to trying to get all those off the ground, and that'll probably be part of our orientation and meet and greet on the 11th, is maybe having some coaches available and just letting our students see what's available to them. The moving timeline is going to be really interesting. Classrooms, our teachers, our principals have done a good job of getting us information about where their classrooms are going to be at the elementary level. We want to have that concluded by May 2nd. We want to have packing and labeling of all of our instructional materials because we got to move some Liberty Bell stuff to Indian Trail, we got, we need to move Indian Trail stuff to eight elementary schools, and then we need to move some Indian Trail instructional materials to Liberty Bell, so maintenance is, they're, they're going to do a fantastic job, I'm confident of that. But we want to have that completed by the 27th, and then I talked with Mr. Barnes recently, and we want to begin moving some of that stuff around June 3rd. Now, keep in mind, they have all kinds of other stuff to do, mowing and all that stuff, so they have a tremendous amount of work to do, but they always come through, and I'm confident they will with this as well. Communication, because I know, I know this is really key, especially as we get closer, we're going to do a voiceover of this presentation here with the PowerPoint and put it on the website. We got, we're going to do the family mailer on the 29th that'll have that information in it, school websites will keep updates with their orientation times and upcoming events, all that kind of stuff, and then we'll make regular additions to the two middle school website. Colin's been exceptional on keeping up all this information, and he'll, he'll stay on top of that, and we'll keep our people as informed as we possibly can. So that's kind of an overview, are there any questions?
I have three.
Okay.
First of all, thank you, the program of studies looks really great, so that's awesome.
That's Colin.
When, when will the date for the meet and greet be final? I just think May gets crazy for parents, so.
We, we hope, I talked with Eldana today, and she gave me the transportation information, we're looking at May 11th, if the principals are good with it, we'll have something out this week.
Perfect.
And with, I want to give them a little bit of time to formulate their specific plan of how, what they want it to look like, too.
And you mentioned that you're hoping that some of the sports will have some information at the meet and greet, will the clubs have that also?
They can, if they want, and I'm sure our principals are talking about that, and we'll make sure that we do everything we can to have as much available to them as we can.
I think it was only two questions, so I answered it, thanks.
Question. Do we know currently, like, Indian Trail buses would go to some elementary schools to drop the kids off there, which is nice for parents with kids at more, you know, schools, and also to decrease congestion, do we still plan on doing that?
I'll talk with Eldana, I can't imagine we wouldn't be doing something like that.
I agree. It really becomes a hub, you know, right now we have schools in the middle of the city, or more your hub schools, this will be east and west, so it just makes sense, and we talked a little bit with Eldana about that, and I think that, that, that just makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
You know, when you look later in, on, if you look at some of the information in the packet, the reason for teachers to be able to do tuition at two different elementary schools is so that if they have, if you're a middle school teacher, or if you're an elementary school teacher, then you'll know my children can ride a bus back to my elementary school, that's part of that thought process that went into that.
Are there any other questions? Thank you, appreciate it.
I do have, I want to give Dr. Jacobs and Dr. Flor just a second if they had anything to add, since you're here, and I think James wanted to say one more thing, and, yes, please.
I did, I noticed that I had two minutes remaining on my timer, so I wanted to be sure that I used my entire, I'm just kidding, guys, I'm just kidding. I've got to give a shout out to Holly, because she's been the absolute best partner to go through the middle school transition of anybody I could ask for, she's done this at a very high level, she's nationally recognized, and her collaboration has been great, we're meeting this week, as a matter of fact, to talk about details and moving forward, just the two of us, so Holly, thank you so much, I really appreciate it, even though you beat me in kickball, you still hold that over, that's been 10 years ago, I appreciate you very much, thank you.
Thank you. Next report is the financial report for February 28, 2022. Leah.
Revenues for the month of February totaled $7,564,000. Property tax revenues are slightly down at 1.8% from last year. Local option sales tax revenues to continue to come in above last year through February, they were up 17.6%. Total revenues through February were up 4% from the previous year. Expenditures for the month of February totaled $6,618,000, and total expenditures through February were down 2.6% from the previous year. As of February 28th, the fund balance had a balance of $16,247,000. Are there any questions?
That is an action item, is there a motion to approve the financial report?
I have a motion to approve the financial report.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed?
Last update is also Leah Valley, it's Sales Tax PEP update.
Receipts for February consisted of $300,000 for the city and $164,000 for the schools. The bank account had a balance of $6,101,000 at the end of February. Local option sales tax collections in the PEP fund are running 17.1% above the previous year. And including your packet was the initial bond resolution the City Commission approved March 3rd, that includes 2.1 million of debt to be paid with the PEP funds.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to all of our incredible staff for all the work you've been doing, I know the planning has been ongoing and you guys are doing a great job, so thank you. That brings us to unfinished business, there is none, so we'll move on to the consent agenda, are there any items people wish to poll?
I would like to consider on, let's see, the 2022, 2023 tuition rates.
So that's seven F.
Yes, I would like to consider, since our finance committee is meeting soon for us to send that to finance for a recommendation.
Is that the only one you want to pull?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll, you'll do that, and then we'll vote on the rest, and then we'll come back to that one.
Okay. And can I make another comment then? And this isn't really a motion, but just something I would like to go forward, because every month, I feel like a lot of my questions originate in the overnight field trip requests, and I feel like I keep asking the same questions when we're using transportation that's not like a school bus or something like that, but I would like to review that, having talked to Dr. Barnett today and making some calls to TSBA, we received some samples of some other systems that we could review, just to be sure our permission slips are good, and any other ideas, just as a parent, I have questions of who my kid rides with, if the board is going to have to approve these things, I have questions about things like that, so although Dr. Barnett's answered that to my satisfaction, I would like to review that maybe for the May meeting.
I don't see, I will, will be able to do that.
Okay, but he did answer everything, and I don't need to pull it, I just want to review that.
Okay. So we'll poll 7F. Are there any other items people wish to poll? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, sorry, yes, you know what I meant. Any opposed? Okay, now we'll pull 7F and we'll talk about, is it?
The tuition rates.
No, it's the tuition rate, so it's 7G, I'm sorry.
7G, yeah, 7G.
Okay.
I just, in looking at the comparisons that were also submitted in our agenda, and I'm not sure when the last time that we looked at that or revisions have been made, but I would be interested to, to look at that again, look at our comparisons in our neighboring systems, and let finance discuss that and give us the recommendation, I would, I think that would be a good time to do that, as we're moving to, to middle schools, and hopefully in the future, I'm not saying now, but hopefully in the future, we'd have room at different levels to accept tuition students, and, you know, we, we want there to be interest in that, so I would like a recommendation from finance.
Okay, and Dr. Barnett, are we okay holding off on that for one more month to vote on that?
On the tuition rates, absolutely.
Okay. Okay, so we will put, pull that and send it to finance, there's no reason to vote though, then if we're pulling, actually, Lee, Lee? Dr. Carter is asking to pull one of these items on the consent agenda, do we need to vote to pull that item? Okay. So, there is a motion to?
Yes, I'll move to remove 7G, which concerns the 2022, 2023 tuition rates, and to get a recommendation from our finance committee.
Is there a second for that motion? Any discussion? Don't get busted. How are these rates determined anyway? I would assume they already go through the finance office, though. They have, this, this, so this is a recommendation, we vote on them every year, and this is the recommendation for this year, it has not changed since last year, but you can see the comparison, so Dr. Carter's asking for us to, to look at that and compare to neighboring schools. Okay.
The change would be, the automatic change is out-of-state tuition, which we've yet to have anyone pay the amount, but that changes as, as we look at tax dollars as they flow in per pupil, that sets that rate for us. The others, it's a recommendation from administration to the board, and we haven't looked at those in a couple of years, so we can look at that in the finance committee, and we have a finance committee meeting in two weeks.
Okay, is there any other discussion on that item? All right, all those in favor of pulling 7G and considering it next month, say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
That brings us, well, we've already done recommendations, so that brings us to new business, our only new business is our communications update, I think we've covered the communication of two middle schools, are there any other items that we need to communicate to our stakeholders?
I would just say, I think the, our biggest concern, and I think Mr. Barnett said it, is information about buses. I'm not sure that's new in any school year, but obviously this school year, so thank you for, remind us that that is an issue every year, it may be a little more complex this year, but if we can reassure our parents that your child will remain at the school if they miss her, but, you know, that, we need some reassurance, I would want that too, but I think, to me, that's, that's a big obstacle that we will definitely tackle, thank you.
All right, that brings us to information items and community reports, so to our wonderful staff, thank you so much, you're certainly welcome to stay, but you're also welcome to go home.